To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all take a minute and silence your cell phones, please? Okay, we're gonna go to item C, which is the consent calendar, which basically consists of the approval of the August sixth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion except the minutes.
Have a second, motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion's carried. I'm gonna take a minute to kind of step tiny bit out of the agenda. I know some of you folks are here tonight because there was something in the agenda about solar projects. The whole purpose of that was so that town staff could inform the Planning and Zoning Commission of any discussions that they've had with people. There isn't any opportunity for us to have public discussion or do any action on those items. If you want to stick around till the end of the meeting and hear that information, you're more than welcome to do so. But be aware that we cannot have any action tonight. We won't be able to take any public comments. And the questions that will be able to ask town staff are very limited. So just giving you the opportunity to make a choice whether you want to stick it out or listen to what town staff has to say about the solar stuff. Thank you. So we're gonna move forward to item D one, which is TA twenty twenty four dash oh one, metal storage containers, which is a request to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, chapter one fifty four, to create regulations for metal storage can- containers. Has anybody had discussion with anybody? As a commission?
Well, we spoke briefly.
Yeah, we, Commissioner Switzer and I spoke briefly about some of the thoughts that we had with each other on it for about three minutes, which as slow as I am means we didn't talk much.
And Mr. Chairman and staff, I don't know if this would be appropriate because the agenda is already written, but can we have the brief solar briefing prior to this to save everybody?
We can do that. We can, the chairman can take the item out of order.
Is that something that the commission would like to do to save these folks from sitting through?
That's what I figured, be convenient.
Okay, so I need a motion?
No, you've got the agenda.
Okay, my parliamentarian says I can make a decision. That's really scary on his part. So what I'd like to do is have the town staff come up and give us a solar update now. That way you folks don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Will.
No problem. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of commission, Will Denji, your Assistant Director for Development Services. Um, the update for tonight for the solar uh update is really reminding um commissions, uh, public and those attending remotely that we do have a group uh holding a public hearing on Thursday at five thirty at the Chino Valley Community Center regarding a um interconnection agreement for APS on a not real solar project.
It's about the line extension, the APS line extension.
Correct.
But they shared their whole project, which has not come to us. And we don't even have rules in place in order to vet it.
Correct. So um just reminding again, please show up to that meeting um if it concerns you, it concerns everybody. Um, and then also as far as the commission goes, if you are attending, um, I don't know if we can do a poll real quick, we just want to make sure we don't vol- or violate any open meeting laws. So we want to make sure we don't have a quorum out there to, or if we do have a quorum, we want to make sure we advertise according accordingly.
So it's this Thursday?
This Thursday, five thirty two, I believe, seven.
I won't be there.
I did notify uh town clerk that
Okay.
that they'll be attending, so I don't know if they posted it or not, but I'll be attending.
I think one is okay, I think we're okay.
Yeah, we can do three, when it hits four, it's a quorum. So if there are four of you that are gonna go, we need to advertise that. So at the end of the meeting, you can tell us that.
Yeah.
The other piece is that the general plan that was just adopted, uh, voted on by the people of Chino Valley last November required us to set up a committee to go through and 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 set up rules for potential solar fields. And that committee formed in January and we've been meeting monthly. And we are right now, there's uh, the team is working on writing regulations. That draft will come to this body in November for a public hearing.
We believe it'll be the first planning commission meeting in November.
The only planning commission meeting in November.
Yes, we do a special one. So that it's probably gonna be set, excuse me, it will be set for hearing on November fifth.
Yes.
Um, so that'll be when that ordinance makes it to the planning commission. And then ultimately to council on December, I believe seventeenth of the current meeting. Oh, excuse me, tenth.
November fifth is also election day.
Always happens.
Well, that's, that's the way it works.
Yeah. So November fifth for P and Z council, ideally November tenth, as long as current meeting structure holds.
Right, and that, that'll be the meeting that we will take public hearing. It will get put in minutes, so it is, it's um on the record. And so everything that happens that those minutes with those comments are attached to it.
So um, if I heard what you said correctly, this meeting with APS is for a line and stick- extension.
Correct.
But it doesn't really have anywhere to go yet because there's no project worth to hook into.
That is correct.
Okay, and there is no project onboard with the town because we don't have any ordinances or any rules or regulations that tells us what we can and cannot do.
Right.
I just want to make sure that I understood that.
Yep, after we, if, if the council adopts rules, then the application, the applicant for that project has to submit whatever it is that the group came up with for re- regulations that they would have to meet in order for it to even get to you guys to be vetted. So that's another couple months, easy.
All right. Anybody have questions for Will? All right, thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Okay, so just to be clear, the item about the solar panels, we just had that. There will be no other discussion about it at any other point in the meeting. And when the opening for the public to speak about any items that are not on the agenda, which is at the end of the meeting, nobody will be able to come up and speak about solar projects because it is on the agenda to get information about. So just want everybody to get, make sure that's clear. Okay, so we're gonna go back to item D one, TA twenty 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 four dash zero one, metal storage containers, which is a request to amend the Town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, chapter one fifty four, to create regulations for metal storage containers. Thank you, folks, for coming and look forward to seeing you back when we get to do something. You think that gentleman, he's smarter than me. Yep.
He's just about everybody.
Thank you for stepping in, I always appreciate that. Yeah. Exactly, good thinking. Okay, is there anybody on the commission besides Commissioner Switzer and I who spoke for briefly for a couple of minutes about this? Have you talked to anybody or anybody approached you guys? Thank you. All right, Will.
Alrighty, good evening, planning commission. Before you tonight, metal storage containers again for, I believe, the third time. So we'll just kind of get right into it here. So a recap of events this year. So this goes well before the beginning of this year. But just to save everybody some time, this item first came to Planning and Zoning Commission on March fifth. It then went to town council on March twenty sixth, in which town council continued it to make a couple of amendments to the language of the text. Uh, then went in April, on April ninth, in which town council continued the item again, uh, seeking additional public input. The, that public input came in the form of two open houses held on June fifth, one in the morning and one in the PM. Both, um, each section, separate section was one for residential and one was for commercial. The findings of those open houses were presented in a study session, two study sessions to council, uh, one on July ninth and the other on July tenth. The information from the public was the general consensus, they did not want regulations on their Conex boxes. They uh did not wish to have a limit quantity wise, maximum quantity on their property. They didn't want to um have these containers adhere to setbacks or be limited by setbacks. The only thing that was about a fifty fifty toss up was paint from the public of whether or not you paint the container a single solid color or even remove logos and graffiti. So uh, when that was presented to town council, staff presented it as we would be amending the Unified Development Ordinance to allow for metal storage containers as a accessory use within select zoning districts. Period. Council asked uh this item to be uh sent back to the planning commission for consideration of additional regulations, which were um, I handed out a handout to you earlier at the beginning of this meeting that lists the six for residential agricultural districts and the four for commercial and zoning district, or excuse me, commercial and industrial districts. For residential, they wanted the commission to discuss quantity of containers on property, single property, placement specifically in the rear yard, compliance of containers with applicable zoning districts, rear and side yard setbacks, requirement for containers to be free of graffiti and logos, requirements for containers to be painted a single color. And then one of the most important ones, they wanted the P and Z to um ensure we discussed was grandfathering of all, excuse me, existing containers at the time of the ordinance adoption. And then for commercial and indo- industrial districts, uh, the consensus was no quantity um limits within those districts. However, single color of the containers, no graffiti or logos, maximum height and then the potential of stacking the containers in these districts, setbacks for metal storage, whether or not to do them or not do them. And then again, grandfathering of all containers existing at the time of the ordinance approval or adoption, excuse me. So how do we accomplish council's request? Um, the first one is pretty much stayed the same since the beginning of this. We need to create a definition for what metal storage containers are. We did that back in March and that definition wholly hasn't changed with the exception of the addition of ventilation, passive ventilation to the containers. Um, number two came out of the revision whenever we discussed this with council back in July, adding metal storage containers as a permitted accessory use in the following districts. And then number three, this was not part of the original proposal, the council um in July, however, if we are going to be adding regulations, we need to have a section within the, within code to place these. We can't just tuck the regulations that govern containers within the zoning districts. We have to view it like we do medical marijuana where we add, have that as an allowed use. And then we have a separate section in the UDO, specifically four point three one for marijuana that have the regulations. So the idea is to create section four point three two, metal storage containers that outline the regulations discussed tonight. So um for a, as streamlined as we can make this discussion tonight, the proposed language, that definition is on screen, that two point two one, or excuse me, two point two, metal storage containers. And then three point six through three point seventeen, all of them are primarily the same. In that green lettering, you have that, it's the customary accessory structures or uses. And we're adding in there that add metal storage container, or excuse me, and metal storage containers. And then we reference that four point three two. It's a lot of verbiage, but it's primarily just a copy and paste as we carry it through each district. For the meat and potatoes, um, this was put together just so we can discuss. It is primarily of what we originally had back in March, um, because it did encapsulate everything we've talked about. Uh, the idea is to really focus on this and then take those six residential agricultural points and the four commercial industrial points and see how we can craft this language into something that addresses that or how um the commission sees fit. We do have that grandfathering on four point three two C. That's that piece that was very um important to the public. We do have that in there. And then on letter D, that table four point three two point or dash one, kind of the same of what we had previously presented. It does have for the residential and agricultural districts that um one container per acre, up to five per property at five per, at five acres. Um, and then the biggest difference on here is that at the bottom of the table, CL, CH and industrial, we do have that no limit in there as requested from the public. Uh, we do have provisions in here for the paint in the residential districts that they do need to paint that. And then if it's a residential district on eighty nine, there needs to be a level of screening. And we do have still the paint on the CL, CH and industrial. And that happened through dialogue with council on the general plan requirements of beautifying State Route eighty nine. So we left that in there for a discussion point, um, to just kind of carry forward for tonight. And then of course, we have all of the exceptions, the, if you need more and present that case, you can come through with a CUP on, on practically any of these of the, for the residential districts. Um, and then we have the provision of what the container sizes are, and if you break them down into twenty footers opposed to forty footers, all covered within there. So for tonight, the recommendation is, one, discussion of council's intra- or council's items of concern. Two, hold that public hearing. And three, forward language to town council for the hopeful September tenth, twenty twenty four meeting. So I will go ahead, not sure where we want to start exactly. Imagine it'll probably be here and we can just get it after it.
So just before we get real far into it, what we're seeing on the computer right now is just discussion items based on different meetings that we've had over the last many months.
That is correct.
Okay, and there's nothing there that can't be twisted, tweaked, changed or otherwise done away with if that's what the commission comes to an agreement on.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up for questions.
Question, Will.
Yes.
Um, what was the attendance of the open house, the two open house meetings in totality? Rough estimate, I mean.
Probably twenty at each session rotating throughout the, so it's two hours each. Um, some people overlapped, some people, you know, some were new faces each cycle, max twenty, I think.
Okay, twenty person, twenty individuals.
Correct.
And then on the commercial properties, is there currently a building code limit as far as how much of the land can be occupied?
So currently within commercial, yeah, so there is no maximum lot coverage on commercial land right now.
There isn't.
So where, just to make sure it's not, you get a one acre, you get a one acre building, you still have to accommodate for parking, for drainage, your landscaping and your setbacks. So it's not the totality of the acreage, but it is a large allowance whenever it comes out.
And the coverage covers the parking, the building.
Correct.
Everything.
Everything.
Okay.
And is, is that normal or is that something that's gonna get um addressed when the code gets?
It'll probably get addressed with the new zoning code.
But we should probably look forward to that.
Yes.
Right? And what would be the norm or what would you be looking at?
Well, it's not no coverage or no maximum.
Yeah.
It's, it's usually around fifty percent for commercial and industrial.
Okay, so applying that same rule to containers would seem logical, correct?
Okay, anybody else have comments or questions? I do.
Okay.
Okay, so from my standpoint, the residential, I think, is pretty much what we sent the council and it's pretty much what we got back. So we're gonna just move past that as far as I'm concerned and focus on the commercial. So right at the top up here, it says metal storage containers at, are considered, it says as an accessory structure in select zoning districts. So these containers are considered an accessory structure, which we do have codes and setbacks for that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so what this is saying is if we amend this, that would be part of the wordage. So that seems to me to kind of settle a lot of things as far as setbacks and coverages and that sort of business.
Treat it like a structure.
Seeing that properly.
They should be treated like an accessory structure because that's what they are.
Except when we looked at the setbacks in commercial and industrial, they're very different than residential. In residential, you have them all the way around and in industrial and commercial, that's not true.
And, and that, that to me is okay because that's a commercial and industrial. And there's lots of commercial buildings that are built touching each other because there is no setback.
The point that was of contention was if you have commercial or industrial that backs up to a residential lot. Currently, there's a provision in the code that requires the commercial or the industrial to have a setback so that they're not, you know, imposing on the residential. And that was a piece that was discussed with the possibility of no setback.
Okay, so what you're saying then is if you have a residential property budding up against a commercial property, right now, the commercial setbacks would prevail.
Correct.
Which means that a person that has a house could have a storage container right up against his back fence where if it was in a residential area, which is what his property is, the rear setback, which varies, but it was around twenty five to fifty feet depending, would be in effect.
Ten, I think.
So, pardon?
I think actually ten, some.
Well, and for the rear setbacks, uh, for a residence to a residence, not residence to commercial. So I'm trying to illustrate the point is that the weaker zoning, meaning the person who's at the mercy of the more powerful zoning, would be the residence. And maybe there should be something done to make it more amenable for the person with the residence to not because that commercial property may show up later when he bought a house with an empty field behind it and it was zoned AR five or whatever. And maybe we need to have some protection for that.
That is pretty typical in zoning codes where you have like higher density up next to single family. The higher density has to do the setback. When you have commercial or industrial next to residential, whether it's higher density or not, the industrial and the commercial have to bear the setback.
Have to comply with the residential setback.
The, the setback that is the most amenable to the residential district. And not, just to make a point clear, if you're up against high density PAD for residences, they have to maintain the same setback as the single family residence that was there, not the high density setbacks. Am I correct? Because if you had a PAD, you could reduce setbacks theoretically.
Are you talking adherence to the setback for the, for the PAD or the commercial?
But not, nothing to do with commercials.
Nothing.
Using residence to residential to illustrate that the high density part would have to meet the setbacks of the lower density part because that's the weaker zoning.
Usually in a higher density, single fam- or a higher density residential, they have a specific setback for if they're budding up against single family. That's, that's laid on their property that they have to comply with. A lot of times they require twenty feet. If it's a two story unit, that's, that's closest to the single family, they have to setback even further. And a lot of times they'll put their parking, they'll do a landscaping strip, they'll do their parking back there so that the units aren't looking down in people's backyards.
So, so even in residential, a single family residential zoning is protected from the high density zoning. So why wouldn't it be uh be reciprocal that the residents be protect- protected from commercial setbacks of zero in some cases?
Or were you, or were you saying that the residential would be protected?
What doesn't say that now?
In the current code, it does, but what was discussed at the council meeting was having no setback.
Specific to containers.
Specific to containers.
To be inserted in this.
Correct.
Thirty, what is it?
Uh, four thirty two.
Four point thirty two wordage.
To keep zoning and setbacks uniform, I think it should have the same wording as commercial. Whether it's a, it's an accessory building, doesn't necessarily have to be a container. An accessory building would have to comply with that, correct?
Correct.
Then the container should have to comply with that. It's kind of common sense, isn't it?
I would agree.
But that would be up against residential lots as well as commercial lots.
So a commercial.
To protect the residential property.
Correct, so a commercial, a commercial, you're, you're not gonna have that ten to twenty foot setback. It's either zero or mate five in some cases.
And accessory structures in a commercial setback are considered to go to zero or ten or whatever. That to me seems fine because it's commercial to commercial.
Correct.
Where we get into the problem is the mix.
Correct.
So can we put some wordage in there like that?
So it, we do have that exist, if we want it to, or if the commission would like it to adhere to accessory structure setbacks, then we have that current protection in place.
But it has to go into this four point three two wordage.
Only if we want to vary from the setback. So if we're, we're selecting it within here, we're adding um that and metal storage containers as a customary accessory structure.
So that locks it in at that point.
Correct, correct.
So you're just saying the council wanted to deviate from that possibly.
Correct, if, if we, if the, the prerogative is to deviate, we need to spell out the deviation.
Okay, which we don't want to deviate. We want it to match. I mean, I think that's what I'm hearing from you.
That's what I, I think makes sense.
Anybody else have a comment on that? I mean, that's important, I think. Okay, and um it says in here maximum height and potential stacking of containers. So it would be my opinion to not allow stacking of containers except through the issuance. What's that?
That's number ten on the list.
Shall not be stacked, but then I was gonna make a statement that if, if they went for a CUP and they could prove it was safe, that maybe that's a consideration, but I don't really see how that could be done.
Okay.
So maybe we leave the wordage shall not be stacked, just alone with no comment after that. But I want it brought out there that was discussed.
Okay.
Do we want to, Mr. Chairman, take public input before we go line by line and?
Well, oh, the answer is yes, but I want to kind of stick some more information in this for the, for them to comment, if that makes any sense. Unless you guys disagree, I mean, I don't want to
I think.
Run away with the train here.
So people not know what the pieces are that we're looking at.
They, what they don't know, they don't know with respect. So the other thing that I had a comment on was in commercial light, commercial heavy and industrial, there's the words no limit, which I think is, if you're gonna create an ordinance, no limit probably doesn't go with that. And so I think there needs to be a limit. And maybe that limit could be per acre of property in that area, starting with like five units an acre. And then if they want more, the opportunity is always to be able to get a CUP and get as many as they can get the commission to go with.
Or it could follow like we were talking, the percentage that's typically allowed on a commercial, commercial zoning. And that might change with industrial versus commercial heavy versus commercial light. I don't know.
So we can always, whenever crafting an ordinance, we always want to make sure, just to put this out there, that if you set the cap, we can remove the cap later on. If we don't set a cap, you can't come back and retroactively do that.
That's why I think it, and, and like Chuck's saying, a CUP can remedy any cap. So I think there does need to be a cap in place. And if you're thinking going forward of rewriting code, it should follow what we're trying to achieve in the long term.
Because they are accessory structures, not a primary structure. So the primary structure should be way bigger than the accessory structure, if that's logical. So I would like to see a limit of five per acre with the possibility of no limit with a CUP.
Okay.
That wordage, I think, should be in there.
And that would be throughout CL, CH and industrial?
Yeah, and the commercial light, commercial heavy and industrial.
Alright.
Per acre, not the whole property, per acre.
Per acre, five per acre.
On an acre.
I have those notes.
Okay, you've got those notes.
So now getting to your point, maybe we should open up the public portion of the meeting to get comments now that we've kind of dressed it up a little bit.
So the only thing we did not discuss was color?
Are we gonna specify what colors are allowed? Do we, do we want to match? Do we, do we want to match existing buildings? Do we want to match existing?
Kind of your prerogative, if you want to go with that, I mean, our prior.
Leaving it, leaving it open to any colors kind of crazy again.
Yeah.
Or not the average person, but there's always the individual that wants to.
And so we heard that, we, we heard, um, public say, oh, you know, we want to make it one primary color, and then we had some time lapse, and well, just as long as it's not hot pink, or not, you know, vibrant yellow.
Correct, so then you got to start naming colors.
Correct, so in, in previous iterations, we've had earth tone colors, or to match the primary structure color. So i- if that's something, we, we do have the language to achieve that.
Well, you have item seven, which Vice President Passiak pointed out, which gives us some, some thought as to what it could be.
Correct.
And the idea isn't to...
I think seven sounds pretty good, that kind of spells it out.
Yeah.
Awesome.
It should fit into the, it should fit into the surrounding area that the storage container's in, instead of seeing mayors every place you see a storage container.
That'd be nice.
Yes, it would be.
I mean, generally, they're trying to hide them, but a, a particular business might be trying to match their surrounding buildings, so.
And we, we have had businesses already, you know, pre- preemptively doing this, so, and it's, they blend in.
Yeah.
And that, we're not trying to set a limit on what the color is, it just needs to fit into the surrounding.
Fit in. So I know for, for our end, making sure it's specific, not just that fits in, fits in is very subjective.
Okay, so does number seven do that for you?
It does.
Okay, then that's good, we got a good start. Anything else?
I, that was mine, Lori.
I'm looking just to double check.
Okay.
Location, we talked about.
Grandfathering.
There was discussion about screening along eighty-nine, but only for new.
Only for new, correct. Screening of, along eighty-nine, whether that's a, some sort of fence for new placement.
Number nine about, number nine about the containers not occupying off-street parking space. I know like big examples like Walmart and stuff at the holidays, they bring in tons of containers for their Christmas sticker.
Usually Walmart has an over-parking allotment already.
But I was thinking like Ace Hardware.
I think for temporary use, that might be allowed.
Absolutely.
So, so that way, it kind of maybe, is there some wordage we can do that if it's a temporary situation like construction or possibly holiday?
We have that under for all zones on the table, um, very bottom, third from the bottom. Uh, for all zones, contractors and homeowners may use metal storage containers in any zone for temporary storage of construction equipment, materials or personal household items during the construction that is authorized by the Tana Chino Valley Building Permit.
Can we throw some wordage in there about businesses with, um, holiday?
Seasonal.
Sure.
Seasonal, seasonal over, overburden on their store that lasts a month or two months?
Sure, can add that in there.
Okay, that would be a good, good reiteration.
I, I don't know if we really need it, because, uh, the general requirement says the metal storage containers shall not occupy any required off-street parking. And as Will stated, Walmart has more than the required parking.
But, but what about Ace, like Ace Hardware, their parking lot isn't quite that big.
Well, and, 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 and they are, and if they have more than the required parking, they can put it in the parking spaces that are not required. But if they were developed with just having the required parking, well then, they can't put a storage container there in the, in the parking area. Now, when you say Ace, they have a back area that has, uh, a lot of storage for materials. I see what Commissioner Passiak's saying, if they only, if they have the minimum amount of parking spaces existing.
Right.
They really shouldn't be putting a container on there, even for temporary purposes, because then there's no place to park.
Right, well another.
And that, that breaks more than, I think, building code, that's, that can get into fire and, um, handicap, all, you know, ADA, all kinds of different situations.
Things about the off-street parking is, if the off-street parking is in front of the building, they're not meeting the accessory structure setback requirement.
Very good point.
So it's, if we didn't do anything other than we already did, we kind of already got there the long way around.
So I mean, if there's an extenuating circumstance where it is a Black Friday and, or, or whatever it is, we could leave it open for CUP if they wanted to, um, if that's something that you.
We could do temporary use permit, they just come in over the counter, give us a site plan, show us where the containers are going to be.
Set a time limit on.
And for how, however many weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Administratively, or does that have to come to us?
We can do that.
Yeah.
For holidays.
Can we get that wordage in there?
Absolutely.
What's that? What about the temporary?
Temporary use permit is already open, it's, it's, it's an open issue.
Okay. Maybe just some way to refer to it.
Sure.
Um, just, I mean, I'm trying to be as proactive here as we can, because that's what we need to be doing.
So the only other one I had was grandfathering on both of those, that was a very big sticking point for council and the public, that if you've got a container today, when this ordinance gets adopted, if this ordinance gets adopted, you're, you do not have to adhere to it. So if you, you've got it now, you keep it now.
It also means that, that we're not going out there and forcing people to repaint their containers, relocate their containers, wherever they are, that's where they are.
That's what the word grandfathering intends.
That is correct.
Now, there's no, don't shoot the messenger, but I got feedback as far as grandfathering, as far as one requirement would be just the painting of existing containers for residential or commercial, just so.
Maybe we could do that and set a timeframe for them to get it done.
You know, if you gave them a year, you know, I don't know, but.
That doesn't go with the ordinance of the general plan to beautify wonderful Chino Valley.
Okay, so just make sure I'm understanding, consideration of grandfathering everything with the exception of color, and then giving a year to come into compliance in some fashion.
Yes, which doesn't seem onerous.
So there was discussion on the commercial properties at the council study session, where they said that they wanted us to consider, someone said paint, no graffiti, single color.
Now, if it's a commercial property and it's not visible from any other means, you know, neighbors or any, then
We don't care.
they wouldn't need to.
Right.
That would qualify under the screening, essentially.
Yeah, if it's screened or can't be seen, then there's no reason for them to have to paint it.
But in residential, that's a different story.
Okay.
That's true, that wasn't, that wasn't the issue.
Yeah.
So on SR one, if the person had three forty-foot trailers on his property, he's covered under the grandfathered clause.
Correct, as proposed.
And you find that acceptable?
That is the council direction that they would like to take.
This addresses all new containers.
Correct, all new going forward. They're, they're not in compliance right now, so.
That is correct.
Correct.
There is, commercial or residential, they're all out of compliance.
I would say largely, there was a period where we were issuing building permits, and that was many years ago, but they'll pop up.
But they're covered under the permit that people got.
Correct.
Now, the other concern would be, so this gets adopted by P and Z, the word gets out, and everybody, well, I'm going to sneak in underneath this ordinance, and I'm going to go put six containers on my lot before this thing goes into.
So the other piece is that currently, they are not allowed. And we do have two code enforcement officers who do spend their days driving around, taking care of weeds and.
We do want to make that publicly clear, that right now is illegal to place a container on a property. This will make it possible.
Correct.
And maybe we can step up enforcement until this thing is passed? Just to make the point that just because it's coming doesn't mean you get to break all the rules you want until it gets here.
Well, when we started working with the council on this, we did do a bunch of drive-arounds, and we had a couple of people try to bring a bunch of units on, and we told them they had to take them off.
So that's going to be a job for you guys to monitor.
Absolutely.
And there's nothing we can do with this wordage to help you, I'm assuming?
Probably not.
Really? No.
Okay, but that's your job, so.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay. All right, so are we satisfied that we can open the public portion?
I am, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, Will.
Yeah.
So we're going to open up the public portion of the meeting. For anybody that would like to speak on this item, you're going to get three minutes to talk. Be polite, be concise, don't be repetitive, and we'll all be gentlemen and ladies here. Anybody like to step up and speak? Yes, sir, please step up and state your name.
Uh, thank you, my name is James Walker.
Hang on, Mr. Walker, one second. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of comments, I appreciate all your careful consideration and time on this issue, very thoughtful. Couple of comments on the residential, item five, no modification. I'm, I'm not clear if that would include insulation on the inside, or any additional, uh, mobile home sheeting or overroof on the outside exterior that might match the existing mobile home structure.
Okay.
And then also a concern with number six, no additional plumbing or electrical. Uh, plumbing, I understand, not everyone needs plumbing, but the electrical, uh, some of these forty-foot deep containers, that can pose a public safety hazard. Um, they do sometimes fall into a confined space, air-restricted area. I noticed ventilation covered in some other areas, but without adequate ventilation, the air can become, uh, not, not real safe to breathe. So maybe in addition of say a one-ten, you know, twenty amp, one-ten feet, so someone could run a fan in their container if they need be, uh, forty foot is pretty deep. So that, from a safety standpoint, those are my thoughts on that item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, if I could offer a suggestion, uh, Mr. Walker, would you mind hanging out for a bit? Because we might be able to come to grips a little bit with what you're asking. Anybody else like to step up and speak? Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Middlestead, resident of Chino Valley. Uh, my comment is, uh, in another state, I used to have two forty-foot shipping containers, and those are long, and we did run electrical to them so we could have lights in there, because we stored plumbing equipment, uh, household, uh, items that when we moved, we had to have a place to store them. So I'm in favor of allowing an electrical outlet for lights, and as the other gentleman said, for ventilation or a fan, because it's true, if you go further into that forty feet, it's not only hot in the summer, but you don't have any lights in there unless you have an electrical outlet. So I'm in favor of allowing for an electrical outlet, just because I've lived that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. So now, Will, you want to step up? The questions that were brought up were modifications to the building, to, not to the, not to the building, but to the accessory structure, and plumbing and electrical added to them. Those things are available to be done through the building department, is that correct?
So as we've addressed these in the past, no, because these have not, the containers have not been covered by, um, ICC, IBC, IRC standards. Previously, before tonight, um, the idea long-term was that with the next building code cycle, which is allotted to take place, I believe, early next year, um, there is appendices within the code that have criteria for treating these as true buildings. Um, and then that way, you know, adding the electrical and whatnot would fall under their governance, so we can actually issue permits. Right now, um, current code or current building code struggles with this, and I, and I know our, um, CBO has had extensive dialogue on this. Energizing a metal box is not, I mean, I, I understand the purpose, but it, it's been usually a no-go. But I understand the excellent point that has come up tonight for the first time.
Why do you know that the building official has allowed an exterior, um, what are they called, like?
Passive vents, the windmills, the.
No, I'm not talking about the electrical.
Electrical stand that's not attached to the container.
Yes.
So he has allowed those.
It's basically a portable light.
Right.
That would be allowed, and with an extension cord.
So like an RV plug-in where they pull up and plug in?
A pedestal out there.
And the reason they're not allowing electrical on a metal container, because it's metal, and there's no codes, there's safety concerns.
Correct.
But the new code, I think, would probably address to where that could be possible, if they followed certain criteria.
Could be, but we need to get that building code in place. But in the meantime, you can do a pedestal, you need a building permit for that. You can do a pedestal, and then you plug in whatever your light is that you want to drag down into the depths of your unit.
Just not mounting the pedestal, you know, truly energizing the box, so if you want to have a power plug.
The box, not the, not the building, because they don't have any grounding mechanism, which every building that has electric in it has to have a grounding mechanism. So the possibility is in the future, just not right this minute.
And just to be clear, if this, the codes that do allow electrical on containers, it's probably going to require foundations and grounding and.
Correct, and a lot of.
It's not going to be a real simple, uh, I, I think the gentleman is just, what I would do, you know, run a
Electrical.
gang box to it, yeah, drill a hole in the side and you're done, but I can see both sides of the story.
You do your pedestal, and then you put your extension cord in. You can't electrify the box.
Yeah.
At this point, and if you want to do that, then it becomes a structure, and then you're right. They have to do the grading, all the stuff that engineering asks for. Your foundation, your insulation, all of those pieces that go into building it as a structure. And those are the pieces that we're missing right now, because we don't have that in our building code.
But we can allow pedestal mount with a permit.
Yes.
Correct.
Or passive solar lighting or ventilation.
Absolutely, and, um, I think we had a provision in here for passive ventilation too.
Correct, that's part of the definition of a storage container.
Okay, that's where it is.
One of the issues with this is these are engineered structures, and when you start modifying them, they become unengineered really quick, and the liability is imminent.
So the, the whole purpose, this started with the idea of making sure that they had, citizens had a affordable option for storage, safe, secure, dry storage. Understand the purpose, that a lot of these are being repurposed for structures, for occupancy of any, you know, whether it's residency to just simple workshops. Um, and the idea was to take that occupancy with the building code adjustments. And, and they are pretty strict on it, that container has to be, you know, manufactured within a certain date. It's, you're not taking something from the eighties and then doing it now, because a lot of them aren't as fit anymore. So there, there are a lot of restrictions with that appendices that we're going to look at next year.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for staff while he's up there? Okay, so we talked to the public, gave them a best answer we can tonight. There is hope in the future for improvement. And they've all had a chance to speak, and we've had our opportunities to speak. Lori, do you have all of the discussion about things we wanted to tweak kind of documented?
I was looking at, at, um, Mr., the notes I took from Mr. Walker, and he was talking about modifying the exterior.
Yeah, there was some, but, okay, so that's where it gets into attaching things to an engineered structure, which if anybody's tried to put a porch on a mobile home, knows you can't do that.
You're not allowed to do that.
Right.
But I think these were cosmetic changes, correct? Not structural.
Insulation factors, um, yeah, so I, I think it was both, we had, um.
And I don't think insulation is an issue.
No, I don't believe so.
But would just facade siding be an issue, that's not structural?
I would say no, there, there's a great example of somebody who has done that on west side of town, I believe, off either one south or center.
That would be a benefit, they could make it look just like their existing structure, if they wanted to.
Put some wordage in there that a facade, a non-structural facade.
Yep.
Is possible?
Hey, Mr. Walker, like to say something again, I don't know if we can open that back up.
Seems how we're uh really overrun with a lot of people, I'll break a rule and let you come up and talk again, because if you have an idea, we're interested. Come on out. I'm not supposed to do that, but don't tell nobody.
Uh, James Walker, thank you. Um, understood the facade or the exterior modification, um, and engineered structure. I, I completely understand that most of the aftermarket attachments require drilling, mounting or attaching to that engineered structure, which makes it not engineered, may not meet the load-bearing requirements, et cetera. So that uh is clearly answered and probably a no-go in my thoughts, even if it were a facade to match. Um, a, a carport, a permitted barn-style carport or something that you slide that container underneath, that has nothing to do with the container, would probably be a better option. Uh, that to me isn't an issue anymore and well answered. Um, the electrical, eh, a metal box is, um, I'm thinking of metal buildings, they're absolutely a metal box.
But they also.
Insulated, but they're on a slab.
And they have what's called a Ufer or a ground wire that's attached to any electrical.
Anyone that brought in electrical to a Conex or metal building, uh, shipping container, excuse me, accessory shipping container would, uh, would know to put a ground rod in with the proper gauge, bare copper wire to ground that, that container. Also, it's not uncommon to set the containers on a ribbon of concrete, if that was needed for a, uh, extra peace of mind.
And some of this may be available with the new building code.
Right.
It's just right now, the minute you step into the territory, and we don't normally have dialogue, but I think this is important. The minute you step into that territory, you made a statement that most people would know to do such and such, that isn't really the way it works in the reality of it, you would think so, but, but folks will be folks and they'll do what they wanna do if there's not some way to keep them from doing it. And when you energize a steel commer-, a, a steel building, whether it's a shop or a commercial building, there's a Ufer wire that's in the footing and, uh, and it's inspected by the inspector and the electrical is inspected by the inspector and at some point, that may be able to happen with the new building code or with your pedestal. It's the same difference, it's just not the building has the power in it. And that will have to probably suffice for now, just because people will be people and do what they wanna do. And if you see ladders on the internet, you'll see that people will use anything for a ladder, so just leave it at that. And I appreciate your comments.
Drag, dragging a, a cord through a, a drilled hole that has sharp edges is far inferior safety-wise to me.
And you're correct.
Having a, an electrical contractor come in or electrician come in, put a ground wa- rod, ground the unit and provide the electrical that way.
And as long as that could be fit under to where it could be inspected by the building department, you're absolutely correct.
Understood, and that's in the future. Thank you.
Makes a hundred percent sense, there's just no code for the electrician and the inspector to follow.
Right.
At the present time.
But, and just.
Progress, not perfection.
I'm on the advisory and appeals board for the Towne Chino Valley when this comes up, I'm gonna make sure that there's some discussion about it and I know Dan Trout would certainly entertain any way to get there, because he's very reasonable.
I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So we've talked this quite a bit, we have some things that were added to the wordage. Can we figure out what that is so we can make a motion? Pardon? Well, we changed it from the limit five here and there was a couple of other things that we added. And I wanna make sure to get in there.
So I have a s- the setback of the commercial and industrial container needs to respect the residential property, so.
The way it's written currently, correct?
Currently written.
So we don't have any additional language there.
We just need to make sure that it's very clear that it has to follow the accessory structure.
Right, we can, we can add that if it looks like people might not see that. We can make sure that the, that's in the language. Um, you, you all said no stacking. Um, the, the limit of five containers, five forty-foot containers in industrial and commercial, and if someone wants more, then they can come in with a condition use permit.
That's per acre.
Yes, I have five units per acre.
Same with the stacking, they can file for a CUP.
Okay, and uh, six weeks temporary containers allowed with a temporary use permit over the counter. So that's what I have.
Are we all in agreement that that wordage is acceptable?
Grandfathering year.
Well, grant, grant, I'm sorry.
The, the year to be in compliance with the paint.
The paint in residential?
Yeah, we wanna have the timeframe on the residential for the paint.
Only.
Only.
Okay.
Now, if we make a motion, do we have to name all those or can we just say as discussed or?
We just shared them, they'll be in the minutes and then we'll write them into the ordinance.
Okay, so why don't we entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion, staff recommends approval. Approved text amendment TA two zero two four dash zero one is reflected in the attachment one as amended by the commission and staff at tonight's meeting, subject to the staff report, information provided during this hearing and the planning uh, commission discussion.
Have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? It's gonna be a roll call vote, just to, I saw you kind of following us. Mr. Penn?
Can I just say something on SR one and SR one point six? I would be much more comfortable with a twenty-foot container on an acre of land than a forty-foot. Just wanna be on the record.
Okay, you can add that, it's, it'll be in the minutes and the, the. Yeah, town council will have that information.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Welker.
Yes.
Commissioner Penn.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Meters, yes. Commissioner Switzer.
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak.
Yes.
Chair Merritt.
Yes. Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Is agenda is to go to council on September tenth.
Thank you guys for the good, hard work you did and for the public speaking up here, it was awesome. Okay, so we don't have any, we're gonna go to item E, which is action items, which means there's none. Um, information items, we already got the solar update, so we're gonna skip that. Is there anybody on the commission that has something they would like to talk about in the meeting tonight? Okay, so the chairman gets an opportunity to speak and this is not on the agenda, so I feel free to say something here. We have a item coming up uh for uh livestock that's been before us many times. It's a contentious issue, which we're all quite well aware of. Thank you folks for being here. There, there was a meeting uh set up for October, correct, and we've sort of put that away, we're gathering more information. If anybody has constructive ideas on this subject, please contact town staff or feel free to visit with myself or any other commissioner that would like to gather information. Um, because we wanna do this as right as we can and be as least restrictive as we can, but still give town staff the ability to have good neighbors, so I'll leave that at that. Um, now comes item F four, which is a chance for the public to speak. You can speak about whatever comes to your mind, you just can't talk about anything that's on the agenda tonight. Would anybody like to come and speak? You got three minutes. Yes, sir. Uh, step up to the mic, state your name. Be aware that during this part, we can't really answer, comment or otherwise engage.
Understood. My name's Brian Lantaro and this will be really quick, I'm just very, not why I came here, but in your uh ordinance that you just reviewed and you're gonna pass on with the metal containers, did you say currently it's illegal to have a metal container? And how do you grandfather something that was illegal?
That's been lots of discussion and we are actually limited by what we're commissioned to do by town council.
That's all I have.
And I allowed you to speak and that was on the agenda, so I broke a rule. You're gonna get me in trouble. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate.
Won't be the first time.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we're gonna close the public portion and go to item G, which everybody likes around here quite well. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll, I'll third.
All a favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you for being here.